Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Call a meeting in order. If you please join us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we ask for your blessings this day on our county leaders, our state leadership, and for our federal government leaders. The challenges faced at each level of government present unique opportunities, often disguised as challenges or problems. May all who are in power see the potential, see the opportunity, and a path forward as we all work together to build a better tomorrow for the generations that will follow. Amen.
Amen. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, here is the line of the United States of America. Here's a reminder which stands: One nation, under God, the invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Once again, good morning. First item of business will be a public comment. Anyone wishing to address an item that is a public hearing will ask you to hold your thoughts until then. It'll be more pertinent to the issue. So this time, please come forward and let us know who you are for the record, and the podium is open for a public comment.
Good morning. My name is Mark DeRosa. I'm at thirty-one forty-three South Indian River Drive. I'm a little out of breath this morning. I just got here and had to take the stairs to get here, so bear with me. I was here last Wednesday to listen to the proposal from the county for the improvements to Indian River Drive, and one of the items that was brought to everybody's attention was the painting of the road from Savannah Road to Fort Pierce. I, me and several others, attended a meeting yesterday with the city of Fort Pierce last night and brought the topic to their attention, and they seemed very receptive to the idea of painting the road. I don't want to say it was unanimous, but it seemed to be that way, so I think that if the two entities can work together on that, I think you'll be able to get it done in short order. It's my understanding there's a meeting coming up in November to discuss something along those lines, so that's a good start. I wanted to talk about a few of the items from the town hall meeting. It seemed to me that a lot of the proposed money that's being spent is geared more towards maintenance than improvements, and I think that a lot of us who live on Indian River Drive were kind of hoping for some changes to the culture and character of the driving on the road. There's no other roads in the county that allow you to reach speeds of seventy, eighty miles an hour because we have stoplights or speed tables or intersections, and the stop signs have definitely helped at the major intersections. But, you know, you look at all the tragedies that have happened, especially in the last few years, they're all speeds of seventy, eighty, sixty miles an hour. And the lady who spoke about her daughter passing back in February, you know, she was a resident of the road that was just going out to get dinner for her family, that could have been my wife and kids in the car, you know, it's just a tragedy. Everybody knows that you can use the road to bypass police, and I think that we need a little bit more than just a Cape Seal on the road. I don't know where that came from. That was a six-hundred-thousand-dollar expense, and that's only for six miles, which means it's going to double, if not more, to do the rest of the road whenever the next phase comes. I don't understand why we're not doing the speed feedback signs for the duration of the road. I think that's probably something that's fairly easy to install. So I think that what I'm trying to say is we're just looking for a little bit more changes to improve the road and not necessarily maintain the road. I think routine maintenance should be built into our regular tax dollars, so that's all I have to say, and thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. We're under public comment. Anyone wishing to address an item? If it is not a public hearing, please come forward. Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. And for those of you who may not have seen or heard or been part of that public meeting, what the speaker was referring to is, as part of the proposal to increase safety on a road, the sides of the road have a quick drop-off onto the, into the grassy areas. So what was happening is the sides of the roads are peeling us away, and it's causing, in some cases, people to over-correct. And so to, to add safety to the road, additional space of, of some material asphalt or other will be added to the sides of the road, which will help to alleviate the issue of getting off the road and then over-correcting to come back, which may also cause a head-on collision. The Cape Seal that he refers to is a overlay which helps to take where the cutting portion of the road will take place and meld it together to make it more sustainable over time. So that's part of that. And then the other, from the site, maintenance provision, is that once that's done, you'll have to repaint the, the lines because you're basically going to remove all of the painting and striping that is on the road with the Cape Seal overlay. So there are continued discussions. This is pretty much Phase One of that process. We all understand that Indian River Drive is, is dangerous, and for those who drive that location, always protect yourself, maintain your, your lane. Thirty-five on the drive is, is the moniker that we, we'd like to attach to it, and the sheriff's office has continued to put additional officers on the, on the road for safety provisions. So, that being said, we'll continue to, to work on that, and that being said, we'll move on to the next item, which will be the approval of the minutes for October five, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Bart, second by Mitchell. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. A couple points of interest. We'll have a proclamation coming up next and a presentation by United Way, but we had an item pulled, ten B one, if you're here for the airport hangar. That has been pulled. We've added ten B two, the county fiber project, and a Pineland Preserve access, and then a item ten C one, a public safety item regarding animal safety. That's the adjustments for today's meeting. Next item will be a proclamation, resolution number twenty-one dash three eight eight, proclaiming November one, two thousand and twenty-one as Florida Trauma Informed Care Day. Madam Clerk?
A resolution proclaiming November first, two thousand and twenty-one as Florida Trauma Informed Care Day in St. Lucie County, Florida, where as the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations: Trauma is any experience or event, real or perceived, that results in lasting adverse effects and impacts an individual's ability in their mental, physical, social, emotional, or spiritual well-being, leaving them stuck in survival mode. Adverse childhood experiences, ACES, include emotional abuse, sexual abuse, physical abuse, emotional neglect, physical neglect, substance misuse, domestic violence, incarceration, divorce, and mental illness. Half of the children in our country have experienced at least one ACE. Therefore, roughly thirty-five billion children are victims of trauma before the age of eighteen. Based on a two thousand and twenty report from the Florida Youth Substance Abuse Survey, sixty-two point five percent of high school students in St. Lucie County reported having at least one ACE. Individuals who have experienced four or more ACES by adulthood have eleven times the rate of drug abuses and fourteen times the rate of suicide attempts. Resilience moves beyond coping with the challenges of trauma to, to finding purpose amid adversity that fuels an individual to thrive and create pathways for others to heal. Normalizing conversation on the persuasive nature of trauma restores power to those in our community who have only been seen through the lens of that single story. They are more than their trauma. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, that this board does hereby proclaim November first, two thousand and twenty-one as Florida Trauma Informed Care Day in St. Lucie County, Florida, and recognizes the need to increase awareness within the general community of the importance of building secure attachments with children and youth to strengthen neural pathways for strong social and emotional learning to prevent acute stress, promote literacy, and increase access to quality and culturally responsive mental services that are attuned to the needs of the diverse population within St. Lucie County, passed and duly adopted this nineteenth day of October two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
A motion by Townsend, second by Bart, is all in favor. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Today, we have Crystal Morris, Chief Executive Officer and Cultural Architect of One Caring Adult, Inc., to receive the resolution.
Good morning. I'll take a picture and then we'll let you have a moment.
All right, good morning, commissioners. It's funny, I do this for a living, and now the butterflies are kicking. I'm super grateful for this acknowledgement, as talking about trauma exposures continues to remain taboo. Instead, we talk about the opiate crisis. We talk about teen pregnancies. We talk about STD rates. We talk about gang involvements in crime, and all of these are important, yet we have to realize that they're all symptoms of trauma's toxic disease. It's like we're treating brain tumors by prescribing over-the-counter Tylenol. Many view marijuana as the gateway drug, but what if I told you trauma is the gateway drug? And the first hit causes individuals to seek higher highs wherever they can find them. Dirty needles are good coping. Baby number ten is good coping. The fourth DUI is good coping. They all seem to be good coping until the bottom of the barrel falls out, and the individual is left in freeze, leaving them numb, leaving them hopeless, leaving them helpless. I started One Caring Adults last summer with the intention of promoting resilient communities by educating stakeholders of the transformational power of relationships. Together with organizational clients, we co-create equitable and inclusive cultures to end, my goal is to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. My favorite quote of resilience is one given by Gabor Maté, and he defines resilience as not being without pain or stress, but resilience is the ability to bounce back from those experiences. The most traumatic experiences in our lives are actually what gives us the opportunity to build the most strength. It's the cracks in our experiences where the light shines, shines through. Trauma exposure can be the most transformational experience in one's life. Resilience can only be experienced through pain. I'm humbled to serve on the board, this is a shameless plug, but bear with me. I'm humbled to serve on the board of Directors for PACE Center for Girls, and I'm honored to have been able to certify four of their team, or four of our team, as certified trauma-informed practitioners to help transform the business of alternative education for girls who were once seen as at risk to now actualizing promise and purpose, leading them to self-sufficiency, self-sustainability, and healing. The program embodies the guiding principles of trauma-informed care. Seeing behavior as only a clue to be investigated, not to be extinguished, by asking what happened or what is happening, to empower our scholars to have agency over their story. I welcome you to come in, I told you it was a shameless plug, welcome you to come in and tour our center, to meet our young leaders, who we are privileged to grow with and to learn from. Now, I'm excited to introduce Mike Alangi with the Sheriff's Department. I have the honor of partnering with Chief Deputy Brian Hester to train their school resource deputies on trauma awareness to become trauma-aware school resource officers, and he's going to explain the work that we've started with training the school resource officers on trauma-informed care.
Thank you. Good morning, Clerk.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share my experience with the trauma-aware training that I recently attended. For those that know me, you know, speaking i- in front of a, a group is just not something I normally would see myself doing, but I was so impressed by this training that, that here I am. A, a quick little background about myself. I've been with the sheriff's office for a little over eighteen years. I spent the fi- first five years working at, at our jail. I then transferred over to Road Patrol for about nine years, and the last four or so years in their school resource unit. I, I can tell you by far, a school resource deputy has been my favorite position that I've held. As school resource deputies, we are tasked with an array of responsibilities. Obviously, first and foremost is the safety of our children on the campuses, you know, and, and the campus as a whole, but we, we are so much more than safety and security out there. We play a bigger role as, as a mentor, as a, as a role model. There's times we take on the role of guidance counselor. We build such special relationships with, with these kids. They, they tell us things that they would not tell their guidance counselor, and they certainly wouldn't dare tell their parents. Some of the issues they share with us, they are absolutely heartbreaking, but other things that they share with us, that they're fantastic, like their accomplishments and their goals. For the more traumatic things that they share, they're, they're looking for, to us to answer their problems. I'm blessed to say, I can't count the amount of times I've heard, "Hey, Big Mike, I, I need to talk to you," or, "Big Mike, this situation happened, you know, what do I do?" And, and it's up to us, the person that they, they are trusting in, to be able to answer those questions and to steer them in the right direction. So what is it that, that we need to do? What is it that we need to have to be able to do this? What do we need to answer those, those questions and give that guidance? One thing is life experience, and I'm sure as you can see under these lights, gray hair on my face and my head, I got a little bit of that, but, but on a serious note, what we really need is, is training, courses like, like the trauma-aware training. It's important for us to have the tools necessary to assist them with whatever trauma they're going through. We have all this fancy stuff on our duty belts and all this new technology that, that we're wearing on our bodies, but we also need is, is this type of training that, that helps us with our thinking process, our problem-solving skills. We like to say that training is just another tool and toolbox that we can pull out when it's needed. The more tools we have, you know, the more training we have, the easier the job is and the better the result. Training like this, you just don't get in the police academy. You don't get this type of specific training that deals directly with how to deal with our students, and everything from recognizing when they are in trauma or have experienced a past trauma that's causing them to act out, specifically how to approach them, what questions to ask, how to ask these questions. This allows us to get to the root cause of the issue, which is something that, that this training deals with, with a lot, and this is, that's just the tip of the iceberg of what's included in this, this training. As school resource deputies, whether often the first ones on scene, we're right there in the hallway when something happens, or when someone approaches us, or we're the first ones that they're calling on, on the school radios, and, and they're looking to us for guidance and to handle whatever crisis or situation i- is going on at the time. During these, these incidents, the kids, they, they go into survival mode, and we are taught in this training how to recognize that, how to deal with it, and how to get the situation safely under control. The, the one thing that's, that's stuck out in my mind that I learned in this training is that trauma actually is the gateway drug, as referenced earlier. It, it's, it's trauma, especially trauma that's left undelved with, that can cause the kids to then turn to the drugs and to the alcohol to cope. But if we can deal with the trauma and the cause of it, as we learn to do in this training, then we can hopefully reduce the amount of, of the illegal drug use on our campuses and in our communities and, and the underage drinking. Trauma left undelved with can also possibly lead to the violent behaviors that we sometimes have on our campuses, our buses, our bus stops. And this training, it, it goes beyond what we can do for the students. It's also teaches us, the deputies, how to take care of ourselves in our very stressful job. We learn techniques to reduce our stress, so that, and, and these techniques we can do on a daily basis. Through this training, I learned that when our stress goes up, our, our empathy goes down, and when our stress goes up, the potential for errors to occur and for conflict to occur, they go up. And, and to be honest, I feel this training is not only helpful for school resource deputies, but also for Road Patrol deputies. Obviously, we, the school resource deputies, we're working with the kids during school hours, but, but when the school day ends and these kids go home, their problems don't just end. It, it oftentimes, our Road Patrol deputies are dispatched to these same kids' homes that met with the same crisis and traumatic events that we would have dealt with at the school, and if they had this training, they would be better equipped to handle those situations and, and just take care of it right then and there. And now, don't get me wrong, there's no doubt the system we have in place now is certainly better than before, such as, you know, utilizing civil citation program, the diversion program, schools using out-of-school suspensions, but if we could handle the situations on-scene just a little differently, handle the root cause of the problem by using the techniques that, that were taught in this training, we could possibly lower those numbers and decrease what's always referred to as, as the school-to-prison pipeline. As I mentioned earlier, I did work at our jail. I spent time with these kids in the juvenile dorms, where they're twelve hours a day. It is so clear, listening to them, that there is certainly some undealt with trauma. I'm, I'm hopeful that with this training, more of our youth can be reached before it's too late and, and they end up in that dorm. The training was very well received by the other deputies who, who attended it with myself. I can tell you from firsthand experience, the training is very well organized. The lessons taught were extremely valuable. There was a class participation lesson that was eye-opening. We, we, you know, the Latinian materials, the, the books that we get, and we get to actually keep these for, for further reference. They're so well-prepared and very informative. So I would ask you to consider funding for this training. The law enforcement community, we, we need this training. The kids we work with on a daily basis need us to have this training. The school staff and the faculty, they need us to have this training, and our community, they, they also need us to have this training. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Crystal. Thank you very much. All right, have a great day.
Chris, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just a couple of comments. First of all, I admire and respect everything you're doing in the schools. I've been involved with these schools for more years than what I'd like to tell you, and you're doing a great job, and truly, the trauma has got to be addressed, so I'm glad to hear you advocating for training. And, Crystal, I've also been introduced and involved with PACE probably twenty years, and what you are doing for the young ladies that go through there and have all kinds of issues, to bring them out more productive, more able to cope, I want to thank you for what you do. So thank both of you for all that you're doing out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, thank you very much. Have a great day. All right. Next item is a presentation by the United Way, Annual Giving Campaign. This might be where a check comes in, I'm not sure.
No, no check this time.
Not today, see?
Not yet.
See?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
I'm always trying to get some money out of somebody. Good morning, sir.
It's coming, though, that's why we're here. We're here to, to share with you what we're doing over the next year to help raise funds for the United Way of St. Lucie County. So, again, this morning, mostly you know me, but Matt Baum, interim director for Parks and Recreation, and I'm a co-chair with Robert Jake, Roger Jacobson with Mosquito Control this year to lead our United Way campaign, employee giving campaign for, you know, St. Lucie County. And it's going to be my pleasure to introduce a couple distinguished guests with the United Way in just a moment, but first, I would like to go ahead and share a brief video with you, and I was told to give Mike the thumbs up, and I don't see. It's a new one. Okay, all right. When you and your coworkers give to the United Way of St. Lucie County, your contributions go toward your neighbors. United Way of St. Lucie County leverages a network of community, corporate, government, and nonprofit partners, and thousands of donors, volunteers, and advocates to create positive, measurable, and sustainable change in St. Lucie County. At the United Way of St. Lucie County, we work for the education, health, and financial stability of every person in St. Lucie County, lighting the building blocks for successful futures. Your generosity makes change possible. Your contributions ensure that your neighbors have the support available when they need it most. So while, you know, many of us know what the United Way is, I still think there's probably plenty of folks out there who do not, so I think it was a great opportunity for us to come forward and just give you a brief presentation and hopefully share that and share that with the folks at home who are watching and just help enlighten them on what United Way is, just in case they aren't, and also to let them know that their county employees are, are working hard, not only for them and our day jobs, but also putting in a lot of extra time and effort to help support the United Way and all the good work that they do. So it is my pleasure to speak with you. So it is my pleasure to speak with you this morning, and I appreciate your time. And I'd like to go ahead and, we're fortunate enough to have a couple of staff and our local president and CEO of United Way with us this morning. So first, I just want to acknowledge Deana Shatley, Director of Development with United Way, who's here with us this morning. I don't believe she's going to be coming up to speak, but she's been...
Don't be scared.
She's a great asset, and she's really done a tremendous job helping Roger and I to kind of navigate, you know, this upcoming years' campaign. And we also have Jessica Parish, who I'd like to invite to come up just to speak for a moment, and I'll be back, so, Jessica.
Good morning, Jessica Parish, President and CEO for United Way of St. Lucie County. First, I would like to thank Flynn Fidgen for that wonderful video. He did it on his own time, so it was a tremendous asset for the campaign internally for the B.O.C.C. So just a little bit, over the past year, the United Way of St. Lucie County was able to distribute over $2.1 million, the most in United Way history, to roughly 76 community partners, projects, and initiatives, providing assistance to over 164,000 residents in St. Lucie County. That's amazing, the highest we've ever done in United Way history. These funds provided emergency shelter, clothing, and meals to over 139,000 residents, while over 23,000 uninsured residents were able to access a full range of health services. None of this would be possible without the assistance of our community volunteers that help serve on what we call our citizen review panels. So 25 volunteers, over the span of five days, reviewed all of the applications and made funding recommendations to United Way and later on to the Commissioners. Thank you to those from the county that participated. I am horrible with names, so I'm sorry if I butcher names ahead of time. Rick Carmona, RSLI Delgadillo, John Frank, Jennifer Hans, Sean Hart, Sandy Henry Gordon, Edward McDuffie, Megan Simon, Danielle Spera, and John Ticanich. So thank you to the county staff that participated on our review panels. We cannot do what we do in the community without the support of community partners and individuals such as yourselves, so thank you.
Thank you. Matt, the task is getting larger.
It is.
So just saying, pressure's on you.
It is. If you wouldn't mind entertaining me just for another moment, and I'll kind of explain what we're going to do to hopefully take on that challenge. So I know we made a presentation last year and we shared some of this info, but just as a quick reminder, last year, just the St. Lucie County Employee Giving Campaign alone raised over $60,000 for United Way. In addition to that, we hosted a number of fundraising events, which brought in... When you combine the two, we donated or, you know, queeted the check for a total of $162,000 to United Way last year on behalf of St. Lucie County. So we've done a tremendous job, it keeps growing every year, and of course, the pressure's on this year to grow it even more, right? So we have a number of events, and first and foremost is, again, we'll continue with the employee giving campaign, which will kick off November 1st. So, you know, notices will go out to staff to encourage them to hopefully continue in their contribution and maybe even encourage them to give a little more if they can. Secondly, we will continue with our annual night golf tournament, which is going to be sponsored this year by Florida Power and Light, which will be Saturday, November 20th, at Fair winds Golf Course. It's a great event, it's playing golf in the dark, so...
It's probably where some of us should play.
I always joke that if you're not a great player, that's the time to play. Nobody can see your swing, and nobody's going to make fun of you, hopefully, so... Second, we're going to hopefully add a new event this year. I shouldn't say hopefully, we are, we're going to add a new event this year that we haven't had in years past. We're going to have our first annual pickleball tournament, February 15th through the 17th, at the Havert L. Fenn Center at 2000 Virginia Avenue. And thirdly, we will continue, again this year, with our big premier event of the year, really is our RMG Ultimate Drive Golf Tournament at Fair winds Golf Course on May 7th. And that's always a huge success, a great event, a lot of great sponsors, a lot of great volunteers, great participation. And I know some of you have participated, it's really a great event. So I would encourage everybody to look for that flyer and that registration form and get in sooner than later, because we usually do have to turn people away for that, unfortunately. It's a good problem to have, but... And the last guaranteed event on our schedule, again, to kind of grow our program, is we will be having a Mets United Way Day at Clover Park this year. The date is still to be determined, but it will likely be, you know, spring or summer of 2022. And more of a tentative event, and I hope it happens, and I think it probably will, but it's not a guarantee yet, it's a softball tournament. So all you softball enthusiasts, we hope to put together a softball tournament through our Parks and Recreation Department that, you know, might also help contribute some more additional dollars to the United Way. So just a couple, you know, pieces of information to make sure everybody knows where to go and how to participate. You know, for those who want to contribute, sponsor, volunteer, or participate, again, just reminding folks to go to unitedwayslc.org or call 772-464-5300. Or even if you need that personal touch, if you'd like to, Deana has volunteered to take those calls and emails personally. Deana Shatley at Deana, D-E-A-N-A dot S-H-A-T-L-E-Y at unitedwayslc.org. I beat you to the punch, Commissioner. Thank you all very much for your time, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Matt, thank you, everybody, appreciate you. We'll see you on the course. All right. All right, next item concludes the presentation for today. Next item will be the Consent Agenda. A couple items I just want to point out. Item 8B4 is related to the American Rescue Plan, which provides for the approval of $3.4 million in the HUD Home ARP Funding Agreement. So that's good news there. And then I also have a couple from the sales tax program that the citizens approved, and we always like to point out that we are doing exactly what we said we would and that you, as a public, has demanded. And that is, under item K1, Lakewood Park Stormwater Improvements, that was funded by the infrastructure sales tax. And K2, the Glades Cut Off Road Resurfacing, that's also sales tax infrastructure program. And then K3 is the Award Design Contract for Melville Road Drainage Improvements. That is also funded by the infrastructure sales tax and is also related to the American Rescue Plan. So those are just a few tidbits that are on the consent agenda that we'd like to point out that we're doing with the sales tax monies. That said, is there any item on the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like to pull for separate vote or discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to...
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mitchell, second by Bart. Any comments or questions on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the public hearings. And there are quite a few, and this is... I'm actually going to see Barbara Geltler coming forward. This is her time of the year to shine for about three hours as I go through these MSBU. Good morning, Barbara.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Barbara Geltler, MSBU Coordinator. This first public hearing is a culvert public hearing. In February 2021, the Board established a voluntary program, Ordinance 21-004, to which eligible property owners can apply for and receive funding to improve or repair culverts, and then they repay this funding through the imposition of non-abhorrent special assessments against the improved properties collected in annual installments on the tax roll. In September 2021, the Board approved Resolution 2021-351 and an initial assessment resolution. Resolution 2021-369 is the final assessment resolution as required by county ordinance. The purpose of this resolution relates to the imposition and collection of special assessments to fund stormwater culvert improvements within the culvert 2021-02 MSBU. Determine that real property thereon will be specially benefited, establish the method of assessing the cost of the improvements, ratify and confirm the initial assessment resolution, and approve the assessment role. Staff recommends Board approval of Resolution 2021-369 and authorization for the Chair to sign documents as approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Barbara. Any questions to staff? Hearing none, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Townsend, second by Mitchell. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next.
Again, for the record, Barbara Geltler, MSBU Coordinator. These next series of public hearings are notice of intent. One of the funding methods available for capital improvements and essential services is to levy non-abhorrent special assessments on those properties which derive a direct benefit from the improvements. This type of assessment is based on benefit and collected along with property taxes using the Uniform Method pursuant to Section 197.3632 of the Florida statutes. In order to preserve this funding option, it is necessary for the Board to adopt resolutions expressing its intent to use the Uniform Method of Collecting commencing in November 2022. The resolutions must be considered at duly-advertised public hearings held prior to January 1st, 2022. The aforementioned resolutions do not in any way obligate the county to levy special assessments. Rather, they simply satisfy the legal requirement preserving the county's option to use the Uniform Method of Collecting if assessment is levied. Because these are public hearings, it is necessary to open each item separately. Staff recommends Board adoption of the Notice of Intent Resolutions and authorization for the Chair to sign documents as approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Barbara. Any questions? This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
I'm moved.
We have a motion by Townsend, second by Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is Public Hearing, Public Works, Culvert MSBU, I'm sorry, Canoe Creek. I'm sorry, I take that back. Culvert MSBU. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item? Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mitchell, second by Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the Hatcher MSBU Notice of Intent. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item? Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
I'm moved.
Motion by Townsend, second by Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is Lakewood Park Water MSBU, Motion to Intent... Blah! Notice of Intent. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item? Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board. We have a motion by Mitchell, second by Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is Lakewood Park Drainage MSBU. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
I'm moved.
Motion by Townsend.
Second.
Second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the Naylor MSBU Notice of Intent. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
I'm moved.
We have a motion by Townsend, second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the Property Cleanup SAD Notice of Intent. Anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
I'm moved.
Motion by Townsend, second by...
Second.
Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is Rose Lane MSBU. Anyone wishing to address this item, is a public hearing, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Bart, second by Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the St. James MSBU. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we'll come back to the Board.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bart, second by Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is the Taylor Creek MSBU Notice of Intent. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement, we have a motion by Mitchell, second by Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the Treasure Coast Airport MSBU Notice of Intent. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. Seeing the movement?
I'm moved.
Motion by Townsend, second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is going to be the Regular Agenda. This will be an administration component, the United Way Administered Nonprofit Grant Funds. And Mr. Tipton, are you going to start this?
Yes, sir, I can do that. Courtney Calderon will be coming up to make the formal presentation, but this is an item where each year, the Board allocates a certain amount of money for nonprofits in our community. Several years back, the Board decided to contract with United Way so that they could make their recommendations based on their experience and panel reviews. And so what is before you this morning is the United Way recommendations for the allocations of the dollars that were made available.
Great, thank you. Ms. Calderon, good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Courtney Calderon, Legislative Affairs Grants Coordinator. Joining me today is Jessica Parish, President and CEO of the United Way of St. Lucie County. As you know, in 2020, the Board entered into an agreement with United Way to administer the outside agency nonprofit funding program. As part of this process, United Way is responsible for the nonprofit applications, the volunteer citizen review panel, and providing funding level recommendations for the Board to consider. This year, through the budget process, the Board has agreed to fund these nonprofits at $606,814. The items before you are as follows. Board action on the nonprofit funding levels and Board action to approve funding the nonprofits every six months instead of annually. Staff recommends the Board accept both recommendations provided by the United Way. That is the item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for the Board? No, I hear none.
Just a real quick question. So we decided every six months to make sure that they were accountable? Refresh my memory, does this go to you, Jessica, to make sure, or United Way? Or is the county responsible?
No, so the United Way is responsible. So as soon as we receive the funds, the grants are approved, all contracts are signed, we will issue the first payment for the first six months. And then we collect reports on a semi-annual basis, which is a six-month timeframe. Once those reports are collected, we can ensure they're meeting the outcomes, discuss any situations that could arise, and release the second six months at that time.
Thank you for the clarification.
And an important part of that is the reporting and the return on investment to make sure that the taxpayer dollars are being spent properly.
Absolutely.
Correct, and that the agencies are held accountable for what they say they will do as part of this application process.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a statement. I've had a lot of phone calls from nonprofits, and I think there's still confusion. A lot of them, when they made application, they made application for what they were wanting for the total ask. So I think they kind of broke it up, and they kind of put some under the grant for the United Way. They put the balance of what they would need under the ask for the county. And so I know that I've had conversations with several of them that weren't funded overall. And so I don't know how to get there, but I think there needs to be some type of an education proponent moving forward so that the nonprofits understand, because there's still some nonprofits that don't even understand that they're supposed to contact you. I've received those phone calls as well. So I don't know how or what we can do to help you, but there needs to be some education to the nonprofits so that they understand if they need $80,000, then they need to make that clear that that's the total ask because there's funding coming from you specifically. And then some of that funding, I know you dibbed it up, coming from us. So I don't know how we can help you get there, Jessica, but please have a conversation because I want to help you get there, because there was a lot of nonprofits, especially those that feed the homeless and stuff, that didn't receive any funding this year. And I think it's because they relate to the table.
So we talked about this internally, and we've... It's still up in the air, but we may shift the timelines. So United Way typically puts their grants out on the street in March. This past year, we did both grant cycles at the same time, did all the panels at one time. This year, we're looking at proposing, United Way goes in March, typical cycle, they have their citizen review panels. The county funds after the county approves your budget for that fiscal year, which typically happens in September. We put your grants on the street in October, do the citizen review process in November, bring it before you in December. That should help alleviate some of the confusion and the concerns that arose, but we heard it, too, a lot of confusion, and we tried as best as we could. But I think that may help moving forward.
I agree it will, because they'll know that if they don't get funding from the United Way, that they have a second option later on to come back and ask for that ask out of our option. So I think that will help. I do want to ask the Board, one of the things that stood out to me was Life Builders, that I know the importance of that, and I know that that was one of the nonprofits, that there was confusion, as well as Grace Way Village. But with Life Builders, they were short the $10,000 that they always have to fund those programs. So I would like to ask consideration of the Board if they would find a way to put the $10,000 back into that budget so that she could totally fund those programs that she is doing currently and has been doing for the past years.
Commissioner, I don't know if this is the proper process by which to do that, simply because we did our approvals early on in the budget process. Mr. Tipton, or actually, I don't know, from a legal standpoint, it's not an agenda item per se as to adding...
per se as to adding funds to a nonprofit in the process. I'm just trying to make sure we stay between the lines of appropriateness.
Well, again, as the board is aware, the board delegated some years ago the process of nonprofit grants to the United Way. That's what we're doing today. We're allocating those funds. I think Commissioner Townsend would like to go above and beyond that, I believe. An additional 10,000 is what she's suggesting, not to take away from any of the other allocations, but to add as a way, I understand.
If Howard could find it in the general fund to bring it over and add 10,000 to this total and give back the 10,000 that was not funded to the Life Builders program.
Do we have a concern, though, that we're picking one out of... How many nonprofits are we funding? My concern is that we unlevel the playing field, because one of the reasons why we took it away from the board as a process and gave it to the United Way is to give that level of distance between we as commissioners and our wants and needs and the things and people that we support. And so I'm just concerned that we set some kind of a precedent that every time we go into this process, if something doesn't come out the way any of the nonprofits believe or feel it should have been funded, and for whatever reason, that it becomes a situation where we have to come to the table, kind of, I'm not going to say blindsided, but at the end of the day, hear it from the dais as opposed to through a nonprofit, I mean, an informal or some other process. That's just my concern, is that do we open up this process? Because this is really our first or second time really using the United Way as this process. So I don't want to, you know, kind of mix up the process, because, and quite frankly, and Commissioner Townsend, you were the leader on trying to make sure that these funds are being properly reported and returned on the investment. So I want to make sure that whatever process we started, that we maintain that and not change it here from the dais and create another process that kind of opens us up to every nonprofit coming to each commissioner and saying, hey, you know, I didn't get what I think I should have gotten. So that's just my concern.
And I understand that, and that makes sense, but I did have conversations about the shortage, and that's when I was also explained that the nonprofits should have asked for the total ask and not split it up between the two. So I just think that there was a lot of, you know, there was a lot of confusion with all the nonprofits, I think. I don't know that any nonprofit totally understood the general ask of what they needed to. So I do, I'm hopeful that moving forward, we're not going to have this concern, but so maybe I should have just had this conversation with Mr. Tipton.
Well, you're probably going to need the approval from the board anyway, but let's just go to Mr. Tipton. Do you have any input?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The recommendations, as you look down the list, there were actually a number of nonprofits that did not get their full allocation of even what they asked for, let alone what they didn't ask for. You can see that the actual request, I think totaled $1.8 million, and we were able to fund $606,000. So it's a number of different ones that are not getting their full allocation. And so I would just share with you that if you're looking to make any changes, this is certainly your priority. I mean, all that you're receiving this morning are recommendations, so you can make any changes that you want. But if you look at the total amount that wasn't funded from all of the nonprofits across the board, it's a large number. And so certainly if you want to make, you know, a couple adjustments, but the ability to make a lot of adjustments is just not there this fiscal year. Now, I think we can take a look at the budget process this next year and see if we can, you know, we understand the fiscal pressures that the nonprofits are under, and I think through the budget processes next year, we could try to increase the amount of total allocation. But certainly the needs at 1.8 and being able to fund only six is... It's a big shortfall.
But I also want to make sure that, you know, you're throwing out a big number there, but that includes two very large nonprofits that actually keep a lot of our folks out of the jails. New Horizons, for instance, is a significant number, so I don't want...
Mr. Chair, the New Horizons is funded separately from this process.
Okay, good.
So the requirements that we have by state statute for some of our nonprofits, including New Horizons, the St. Lucie County Department of Health, those are funded outside of this.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Barts?
So in reviewing this, Commissioner Townsend, I'm a big supporter of Life Builders, so I get where you're coming from. I think that what they do in the community is amazing, but again, Sheriff Zadalski, I understand with people who have not been funded at all that this could be a true dilemma. I can tell you there are some that have not been funded that I would have liked to see funded, but that's, I'm not in that process. So as much as I would like to see us move that 10,000, I would then argue that there are others that I would like to see moved. And I don't think that's a fair way to do it, when we've tasked you at United Way to do this, so we are not under that pressure.
Yes, that's why we're here, to take that pressure off of you from determining out of the 1.8 million in requests, who to fund for the 600,000.
Well, in fairness too, that, you know, the entity at current discussion last year came for additional funding because they weren't able to COVID to do their normal fundraising. This past year, they were able to return to that and had record year. So, I mean, that's the other challenge, as we talked about, and Commissioner Townsend, you are always good to say, look, you know, we're providing this, but what about a match? So that really is, you know, that's great thought process, again, challenging the nonprofits to come to the table with a match, so that it's just not a handout. It's just, you know, we're working together, it puts some pressure on the nonprofits to actually continue to focus on how to do fundraising.
Well, yeah, and I think every nonprofit should be held accountable, that money shouldn't just be given, that it should be a matched, whatever we help and assist them with, they should have to raise it, it holds them accountable. Jessica, how do you, whenever you're looking at this, how do you determine, because there's a lot of nonprofits that duplicate services as well, like feeding the homeless and stuff. I know there's a lot of the nonprofits that do that. So how do you determine when the nonprofits come forward and you vet that the numbers they're turning in and what they're asking for, they're held accountable for what they say they're providing?
So using your example, Commissioner Townsend, in regards to feeding the homeless, we look at nights that that's offered. You know, Sarah's Kitchen offers it certain nights a week, Grace Way offers it certain nights a week, to make sure there's at least a service as close to every night per week that we can handle. Also, the agencies are required to submit their semi-annual reports that's reviewed by a board committee internal to our organization to make sure that they're meeting their outcomes, their numbers, the numbers served. If they're not at the thresholds, we bring them in for a meeting, sit down with them, talk about what's going on. Maybe there's some internal challenges, turnover, something that we weren't aware of that resulted in that. COVID had a huge issue in that realm that last year. And then get together, develop a work plan on how they can get to that end game. If for some reason they just can't do it, we have, in the rare instances, revoked funding from agencies due to the inability to meet their outcomes and indicators.
Commissioner Townsend, would you, in consideration for the board, would you consider putting that priority that for the additional 10,000, that the entity raise an additional 10,000 to achieve that?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
What is the thoughts of the board? But I would also like to just also temper that with, if that's going to happen, we're going to send us back, and we're going to have to make sure that when we come through the budget process, that we don't go back through this process again. I mean, I get it, we were in a transition, but I think it would be inappropriate, as stated, to start to just pick and choose our favorites, or whatever the case, however we choose as the B O C C to add to somebody's allocation. We did this for a reason, we put it in the United Way, so it kind of took us out of our hands, so that we didn't have that competition between us and who we like and who we think should be more receiving. So from the board's standpoint, the one issue that we have from all the other funding situations is a request by Commissioner Townsend to increase the named nonprofit additional 10,000, and I suggested that that 10,000 be met with an additional 10,000 in funds raised for a match.
Okay, now, can I speak?
Yeah.
Thank you. First, I was encouraged by County Administrator Howard Tipton on increasing what we can allocate next year. I think as you look at the numbers and the prices of food and everything else to feed the people, they're skyrocketing. Just go to a local grocery store as a family, I see it firsthand. One of the things I liked about United Way taking over the process is that it took the politics out of it, that it took, we don't determine, we just look at it after your approval. But I do see where Commissioner Townsend's coming from, because I also heard from Dr. Viddy, saying they usually ask for $30,000, they thought they would get 10 from you, 20 from the county. That didn't work out that way this year. Same thing with Grace Way Village. They had applied for 40, they applied separately. For each entity, they only got half. So I think we need to tune up the process maybe, just a little, make it more clear to every nonprofit. I'm encouraged where they say they're matching that, to me, whether we go to Tallahassee as a county commission here, trying to get dollars, those legislators love to hear the word "match." So I think I will be supporting Commissioner Townsend's offer of the 10,000 this year because of the communication or lack thereof. But then also I feel guilty because, or not guilty, but I feel bad that Grace Way Village and some of the other people that do marvelous, marvelous work in this community, and I've seen it firsthand, we can't do for them. But as long as they're a match, and I hopefully, looking down the road, we can fix this situation so things are more clear, I'll support Commissioner Townsend's motion with the match.
Any other comments or questions from the board? So you have an item before us to which you're suggesting staff recommendation, and now we have a component, an amendment to the staff recommendation that would be to increase Life Builders by 10,000 with the requirement that it be met with a $10,000 fundraising match. Is that adequate?
Yes.
From the board?
I think it would be just move staff recommendation as modified to increase, potentially increase it by 10,000 to Life Builders, provided that they match the $10,000 and direct the county administrator and management and budget director to find the $10,000 in the appropriate account, presumably from general fund or reserves.
Mr. Tipton? Because you're going to have to find it.
Yes, sir.
All right, then.
And it's not taken from any other entity, correct?
Correct.
So is that a motion, Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, sir.
Second.
A motion by Townsend, second by Mitchell. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next item will be, next item was pulled.
Mr. Trevor, question. Mr. Tipton, I don't, is Stan here? I don't see him.
He is not, but Eric's here, though.
Okay. I just have a question on the airport. I know that it's been pulled, but I just want it on the record that that hangar has been sitting empty too long, in my opinion. We had three people come in. I'm a little concerned that we're now pulling this, because we need to get a tenant in that hangar. So do you know, is there conversations as to when this is going to go back out for bid if it does, and when is it going to come back forward? Because the hangar is sitting there costing taxpayers money by not having a tenant in it.
Well, I would suggest, and Eric, come to the table. As part of it, there have been some new situations that are happening at the airport, as you may know. And so from that standpoint, I think it's important that that may change the entire dynamic of the request for proposals, but I'll turn it over to the airport manager.
Good morning, Eric Knupka.
I think so.
With the airport? So in reference to the hangar itself, I have been, I'm going to caveat something real quick, because I've been selected as one of the individuals to be part of the selection committee. So in essence, the cone of silence that I'm underneath is a reference to that. So we, I haven't really necessarily been privy to the further conversations in terms of what is going to be done potentially for rebidding. We haven't even had a chance to meet yet in terms of the actual selection committee. I certainly understand and agree with you 1,000% that somebody needs to be in the hangar, especially, you know, due to the activity of the airport. We need to increase in this, the reason why, you know, I'm here, and we're all here to try and make sure that we're increasing, you know, the value of the airport in the grand scheme of things. Fortunately, I don't really necessarily have the answer at this moment in terms of, you know, what the timeframe is for us to go ahead and either decide to rebid or even pursue further.
Sure, and Eric, let me just jump in. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as you know, as you indicated, there is a significant change happening at the airport in terms of the fixed base operator. And the idea was to kind of understand that, that sea change a little bit better, you know, hopefully the delay here is only a couple of weeks. It is not meant to be a long-term delay, but it was just trying to better understand what's happening and how this can move forward. It is a, it is something that we've not seen at the airport in some time, and it holds a great deal of potential, depending on how it works out. And so we were thinking a few weeks, so we can better understand the situation before we put it back out was appropriate.
Well, and I understand that, but I'm just stating that I know that with the FBO transitioning, I'm not really interested in them having the third part of that component at the airport, because then that's a total monopoly. There needs to be another business out there outside of the FBO or the FBO that's purchasing them. So to me, I agree, we need to have that conversation with whoever's coming in, but I just don't know why it would hinder us from moving forward, trying to get people in there for the hangar. I'm okay with a couple of weeks, I just don't want this to go another couple of months and it still be sitting there empty.
Understood.
All right. Anything else on this item? Thank you very much. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, next item is going to be B2 County Fiber Project on Midway Road and a contract. County Administrator, I mean, County Attorney.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we very much appreciate the board's willingness to consider this as an addition item. It's something that has just come up, really, it's a challenge but an opportunity as well. Assistant County Attorney Caroline Valentin will be presenting it, but in terms of the opportunity, the city got a grant, and we were going to work with them on putting our conduit or our facilities in theirs, but for whatever reason, that's not doable at this point. But the city graciously was willing to let us use their contractor. So we really feel like this is an opportunity for the county to have its own conduit, and really, in the long run, I think will be a better situation for us. And there are some time constraints, as Ms. Valentin will present to you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Patrick Dian's here, just in case there's any technical questions, but Dan's done a good summary with the history here. And basically, what we have is the city has a grant to install a fiber optic system along Midway from the county's emergency operations center to the Saint Lucie County Sheriff's Office. And as Mr. McIntyre mentioned, we did approach them to see if we could include the county fiber within their conduits, but they did say it was not feasible. So the alternative is that we use their contractor, Young Communications, also known as YCOM. We received a quote from them, and the amount of $279,425. This includes the cost of the materials and performance of the installation. It would not include any permitting costs or oversight inspections that we would contract separately for. And the key here, though, is time is of the essence, because the city of Port Saint Lucie And the key here though is, time is of the essence because the city of Port St. Lucie has time constraints on their grant. Really, the grant provides, it needs to be, the work, all of the work needs to be completed by January twenty-twenty-two. They have sent, they will, they do intend to seek a grant extension, but they haven't obtained that yet. And we did request that Kim Lee Horn provide an independent cost analysis of the YCOM proposal. Kim Lee Horn did determine that the unit prices were market rate and that it would in fact be more economical for the county to partner with the city instead of using our own contractor and also performing the work separately. So based on the time constraints as well as the cost savings to the county, county staff is recommending that the board approve a bid waiver for the installation of county conduit pursuant to section eight point one, A-ten of the county purchasing manual, which does allow for a bid waiver if you determine it's for good cause. To also approve the quote of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars submitted by YCOM and to authorize the chair to sign a contract with YCOM as approved by the county attorney.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
It's a no-brainer. Motion to approve.
We have a motion, a motion by Townsend, second by Bart.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Pinelands Preserve Access.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item also is an add-on. Again, we very much appreciate the board's consideration on this. We try not to do this very often, but sometimes things happen where there's time constraints, and this is one of those. Just in way of general background, the county acquired some property from Murphy White Dairy back in nineteen ninety-eight, some twenty-three years ago. And it was, it was for a preserve called, we named it Pinelands Preserve. We got an FCT grant to do that. It's one of our best preserves that we've had. We utilized an access from Okeechobee Road, which has also been used by other property owners in the vicinity, including Vera Producers, Inc., which is an agricultural operation that's adjacent actually to the county's preserve. When we acquired that, again, we allowed the public to access that on a limited basis. It's a preserve. It's bird watching, hiking, just passive recreation. We partnered with Vera Producers and other neighbors in the past in terms of maintaining the road and the access way. We've tried to be good neighbors, as have they. Unfortunately, we have a neighbor who sued both the county and Vera Producers to try to, I guess, close the access or limit the access of the county and even sued Vera Producers because of an easement that they granted in nineteen eighty-eight to our predecessor entitled Murphy White Dairy. Not to the county, but we inherited the property when we bought it and inherited the easement. The easement has two parts to it. There's a part that's actually along the perimeter of the Vera Producers property. That's unchanged. That will not be impacted by what we're proposing to do. They graciously allowed our predecessor and us to continue to use that easement. It has to do with the easement from Okeechobee to their property line. They did grant the easement. I think they were trying to be a good neighbor back in the day in nineteen eighty-eight. But it's not the easement that the county relied on in determining whether it had access or not. We relied on a series of other easements that are predate that, a ninety-one easement. And then it was amended, I believe, in ninety-five, I believe. In any event, the point to be made is that we didn't rely on that nineteen eighty-eight easement when we bought the property. It's not, it's not relevant to us. It, we are, we were approached by the Vera Producers to try to, again, to try to be a good neighbor to them and release that easement because that will help them in the litigation if we do that. It's, it's not necessarily gonna help the county in this sense, but it won't hurt us either. And from a staff perspective, we think it's the right thing to do. Again, it's consistent with our course of conduct over the years in this area. We have legitimately tried to be a good neighbor, and that's what I think we're here about today. We, we are, have proposed a partial release of easement. It will just release the portion of the nineteen eighty-eight easement that's not relevant to us. It'll continue to have the other portion that is relevant. It won't release any of the other easements that we're relying on. We're in litigation, as I indicated. There's actually a hearing, I believe, tomorrow on different motions for summary judgment by the various parties, including the county. We are being represented by the title company because this is an attack on our access, which was, we believe, insured by our policy. So the county is being represented by counsel hired by the title insurance company. There are representatives from Vera Producers in the audience. I believe I see Mr. Melville, who is the attorney for Vera Producers. Mr. Nelson, I believe, also is representing them if the board has any questions of that group. Again, I believe they've been good neighbors to us, as I think we have to them. This is similar in that vein. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. This is a regular item.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve staff recommendation by Townsend, second by Bart. Any other comments or questions on the item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next item, moving on to Planning Development Services, item C one. And I see that our director is making her way forward.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We have a short update for you this morning for the month of September. So this past month of September, Planning and Development Services approved some various minor site plans. We have a minor site plan off of Brock Smith and Okeechobee called Trace Tesoros. It sounds very exotic. It's just a subdivision, a large lot subdivision. We also have some subdivision of land out near Midway and Okeechobee intersection in the triangular section there. These two items here, this is a lot split, and then this minor, sorry. Oh, my. And then this minor site plan are associated. They're the same owner. They're just separate applications. And this is also a subdivision of land. We also had a Class A mobile home approved by Planning and Development Services just south of Orange Avenue. I believe that one is on Politzer, yes, on Politzer Road. We have a local targeted industry, FA Precast, that is moving from its site on Kings Highway up to the airport East Industrial Park, moving into an old boat manufacturer. And they needed a use determination, so we got that done for them really fast because they needed to move in really quickly. That's a, that's a great story. FA Precast is a wonderful local business. We did a site visit. And they do some really impressive work worldwide. So excited to help them grow. We also had an executive order extension for a minor site plan called Crystal K on the North Hutchinson Island Ocean Side. That is a twenty-one unit multifamily development. And that is the extent of it for September. Any questions?
Any questions, Leslie? Hearing none? Okay. Thank you. Keep rocking and rolling. Next item will be on to Public Safety, item D one. Resolution number twenty-one dash three nine two, Animal Safety Sheltering Stabilization Project. Director Parrish is coming to the table and... Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record. My name is Ron Parrish. I'm the Public Safety Director. And with me this morning is the Assistant Public Safety Director Frank Amandro, Assistant County Attorney Caroline Valentin, and Maria Valencia, our Animal Safety Coordinator. As well, I'd like to recognize Dr. Brett Adams, who's with us this morning and will be available for questioning later on. So before you this morning, for consideration, is a very important program. This program will provide for the stabilization of animal sheltering and care services in unincorporated St. Lucie County. It is a model that will provide for improved financial and fiscal control over animal sheltering services and to be the masters of our destiny. Mr. Amandro's presentation will take you through the what, where, who, and why we are here today regarding this initiative. So with that being said, I will now turn it over to Mr. Amandro, Caroline Valentin, and Maria.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Good morning. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for your time this morning. As you will recall, when the county and the two cities terminated the animal sheltering contract with the Humane Society of St. Lucie County, our Animal Safety Division stepped in on a moment's notice and set up a temporary animal shelter at the airport. The temporary shelter was used by three jurisdictions until Port St. Lucie renegotiated a contract with the new Board of Directors for the Humane Society of St. Lucie County. For the better part of seventeen months, the temporary animal shelter serviced both the county and the city of Fort Pierce. The Animal Safety Division operated the temporary shelter at the airport from October two thousand nineteen until June two thousand twenty, when we transitioned the entire operation to Savannah Road and operated the animal shelter until March two thousand twenty-one, when Sunrise Humane Society took over operations. Our Animal Safety Division assisted Sunrise through the transition process. I can tell you that our Animal Safety Division did an outstanding job on operating and managing the animal shelter. Our contract with Sunrise Humane Society was originally based on the same funding we provided our previous vendor, Humane Society of St. Lucie County. The current budget is based on three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city of Fort Pierce and two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the county. The contract called to begin renegotiating the funding streams in July of two thousand twenty-one. The city and the county received Sunrise's new budget proposal of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an optimum budget of eight hundred thousand dollars. After receiving Sunrise's proposal, the city indicated they would increase their contribution by a hundred and fifty thousand, or, excuse me, fifteen thousand dollars, totaling a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, if the county was willing to do the same, meaning our contribution would go from two hundred and forty thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It should be noted that the city has not increased the animal sheltering budget in quite some time, whereas the county has increased its animal sheltering budget several times over the years. The county proposed its counteroffer to the city, seeking parity, which is based on the Humane Society's own intake numbers. Our proposal asked for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding from each agency and included performance measures to be built into the contract, such as donations, charitable funding, and volunteer hours, better accountability for both the county and the city, representation on the Sunrise Board of Directors, and a more diverse Board of Directors to include an attorney, accountant, and business professionals. The county also agreed to share in some maintenance cost, routine maintenance costs, if you will, like repairs to the kennels, pest control, and et cetera. The city rejected the proposal in its entirety and moved forward with independent negotiations with Sunrise Humane Society. So how did we come to parity? The county reviewed the Sunrise Humane Society's intake reports from March two thousand twenty-one through July two thousand twenty-one. A total of seven hundred and ten animals were transferred into the facility by both the city and the county. Three hundred and twenty-eight animals from the city and three hundred and twenty-three animals from the county. Fifty-nine animals cannot be reconciled to which agency impounded the animals due to the lack of information on Sunrise intake reports. The city then asked Sunrise to revisit their original proposal of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sunrise sent the, sent a proposal of five hundred and seven thousand dollars to the city. In turn, the city sent the proposal to the county with no explanation or details how it was drafted or how it was formed. There are two important notes with this proposal. First, the county would be receiving less service than previously experienced. And secondly, Sunrise's previous shelter consultant informed the county and the city during our first contract negotiation session that a five hundred thousand dollar budget was not sustainable moving forward. We then met with Sunrise to discuss the new proposal, asking for clarification. We asked to provide the current budget proposal from Sunrise, including any updates based on the recent discussions they had with Fort Pierce, such as the contract increase for Fort Pierce, the value of loan care, after-hours emergency care, and utility expenses. We also asked to provide data used to determine the two hundred and thirty-six percent increase in intake and processing of animals notated in their budget. Also, to let us know the value of the discount that is being provided to the city for the use of Savannah Road facility. To date, we have not received a response. Public Safety does not see that the current interlocal agreement with the city of Fort Pierce and the service agreement with Sunrise Humane Society as a sustainable partnership moving forward. Again, we have asked for parity from both the city and Sunrise based on Sunrise intake reports. But that has not been realized in any proposal from neither the city or Sunrise. So how is the five hundred thousand dollar budget now sustainable, we ask? We have concerns for next fiscal year. As you will recall, Sunrise's optimum budget is eight hundred thousand dollars. Moreover, after the two hundred and thou, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment from both the county and the city to renovate the facility, the facility is still in need of several capital improvements. A new roof, a paved parking lot, and a gopher tortoise problem. These are just a few of the major issues still needing to be addressed. After careful review, the purchase and lease option is the most feasible option for the Public Safety Department and the Animal Safety Division. The purchase and lease option gives the county the opportunity to control its own destiny concerning animal sheltering for unincorporated St. Lucie County residents, which we have not had since we dissolved the contract with the Humane Society of St. Lucie County. Additionally, the lease option gives the county the flexibility to adapt to future needs. Public Safety had two independent appraisals conducted on the property. The appraisals came back within five hundred, five thousand dollars of each other. One at seven hundred thousand and the second at six hundred and ninety-five thousand. The purchase agreement would have the county purchasing the property for seven hundred thousand dollars plus closing cost. Dr. Adams would be our shelter management team. The lease agreement allows Dr. Adams to run a small percentage of his existing business from the building. Dr. Adams would lease that space from the county offsetting the shelter management cost. These are the hard costs for the purchase and lease option. So what is the, what are the benefits of the purchase and lease option? Well, we had hoped that we would have a sustainable partnership with the city of Fort Pierce and Sunrise Humane Society. But over the course of six months and the unwillingness to present the county with a service contract based on parity, we realized we need to control our own destiny now and in the future. The purchase lease option gives us the county a better budget control. We gained thirty thousand, hmm, thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars in revenue for leasing space back to Dr. Adams. It's a better business model and plan. It's centrally located on Midway Road for residents leaving in the unincorporated St. Lucie County. Our Animal Safety Division's prior experience in providing shelter services, receiving more services, not less services. There is less downtime for our animal safety officers between calls of service. Now it is a twenty-minute trip to Savannah Road and a twenty-minute trip back. Less travel time for our ACOs translates into fuel savings and wear and tear on our vehicles. More importantly, it's less travel time for our residents, thus providing for better customer service. But most importantly, we are partnering with a well-known and respected veterinarian that is well-established in St. Lucie County, whom we have an excellent working relationship with. The property is three acres, so there is plenty of room for equipment, vehicles, expansion, and creating outdoor dog runs. It is zoned as Ag One. There are two buildings on the property. The main building is approximately forty-one hundred square feet, and it has a new roof and recently painted. It currently has thirty-eight kennels, which would meet our immediate... It currently has 38 kennels, which would meet our immediate needs, given our, given our intake numbers. The outbuilding is approximately 1,300 square feet and needs a new roof. The better option may be to tear down that outbuilding and expand onto the main building to provide an additional 20 or so kennels, taking in consideration the expansion projects along the Midway Quarter and west of I-95. Facility's had a professional inspection performed on the, on the building to take a look at key systems like the HVAC system and ADA compliance requirements. We are awaiting their final report. The facility needs a new, a few new improvements in order to operate an animal shelter, such as perimeter fencing, kennel runs, outdoor lighting, exterior camera system, and a gate access to secure the property. The Board approved the FY 21-22 Animal Safety Division's budget at $964,000. We have personnel expenses approximately $340,000, an operating expense of $330,000, and approximately $481,000 in animal, in animal sheltering. This includes the two new full-time positions that will be, that will operate out of the Midway Road facility, handling intakes and transfers and paperwork. We are requesting one-time funding dollars in the amount of $1.3 million to purchase the building and property at $715,000, which includes the closing cost, and approximately $585,000 to make some of those renovations that I mentioned before. Therefore, staff recommends the adoption of Resolution Number 21-392, which authorizes the termination of the current interlocal agreement with the city of Fort Pierce, the termination of the service agreement with Sunrise Humane Society, the purchase of the Midway Road property, the lease agreement with Midway Veterinary Hospital PA, the lease and service agreement for shelter administration and animal care with a nonprofit to be established by Dr. Brett Adams, DMV, and approval of the two, the two new full-time animal shelter client service specialist positions, the funding for which is currently budgeted within the Animal Safety's fiscal year 21-22, and approval of the $1.3 million funding request for the $700,000 purchase price of the Midway property, closing cost, and reservation, and renovations and enhancements of the property. So, that concludes the presentation, but we are certainly open for questions and discussion.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. So, in other words, if I'm reading this correctly, you're asking for $1.3 million on top of the $900,000. That is the operating budget, correct?
That is correct.
Also, this may have something that... First, I want to make it perfectly clear that the staff has established a really good record of successful operating an animal shelter and has used that experience when evaluating the shelter's options. This past weekend, it was brought to my attention, there's a Facebook thing, Big Dog Ranch Reserve, and they had came out on 10/16 saying, "Urging help, need, need funding for starving animals." That's poppycock. But this is what we've got to be aware of a, as a community, that just because somebody's out there telling you that the animals are not being fed and the animals are being starved, it's not true. Liars figure. Figures don't lie. And when we're taking care of our animals and doing the right thing, I just, that, that, I was appalled that, how there were so many shares on it that I couldn't keep up with it.
It was rather unfortunate, Commissioner. I know that Maria, she monitors that stuff, you know, so she did bring it to our attention. I do have to give credit to Susan Perry. You know, she was the one that, you know, started a post that said just what you just said. That is a false narrative, and through her efforts, that was, that site was taken down.
Thank you. I also think that the location further west on Midway provides for greater efficiency for public safety and getting in and out quicker.
Absolutely.
For not only the, these facilities that are being used for different organizations. Dr. Adams, you've had a long and established relationship with the county, and we work well together with you, sir. The proposed business model provides a fair cost to me for the unincorporated residents and the budget certainty in the years to come, all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Board?
Quick question.
Commissioner Bart.
I know that, I, I believe you had it in the presentation, kind of went by, and I didn't write it down. When was the building built? Do you know? Did I hear '89, maybe?
1979.
I thought it was '79.
Okay. So, in the renovations, we're going to have to bring it up to hurricane code?
All that is being reviewed. Danny Rutherford and his team, they had a professional inspector come in, and we're waiting for that report to come back. I know that, I believe, I believe that Dr. Adams does have hurricane shutters on, on that building as well.
Okay, I just am concerned for that piece. God forbid we have that, I'm not going to call it what it is, that type of storm, that those animals are secure and safe. And I know that you guys look at it. I just want to throw it out there.
The other thing that we have at our disposal, Commissioner, is, you know, that we run the pet shelter whenever there is a hurricane, you know, so if there is a need, we will bring those pets over to the, that temporary shelter during a hurricane.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Townsend?
I have a couple of comments and questions. I, I know that this has been, I mean, Commissioners Zdowski, you know as well as I do because we've been involved for years with Humane Society. I think in moving forward, I think this is a good plan. But I think long-term, I am not for taking property off the tax roll and giving it to government. So, I know that this is an end term, I'm hoping, and long-term would be that since Ag is out west by our fairgrounds, we already have that property. The property on Midway Road is only going to go up in value, so it's an investment that we'll make now, but in the end, long-term, to relocate and build a facility that's our forever facility out by the EOC Center. And then we would be able to get our money back, plus some, and the improvements we put into this, to put it back on the tax roll. With that said, I also think it's important that the one thing that I think we have lacked is there has been a board with the animal shelters, but I don't know that there's ever been any citizens' budget oversight. So, I, I feel that as Commissioners, we should each have an appointee, a constituent in the community, to be able to have a citizens' overview. The citizens know the need of the animals, and they're involved. There's a lot of the nonprofits with the animals. I think if we could have some type of a citizens' board, that they can be involved in this because they are out there. They want to help. We need to engage them because that's free services, and it's a voice, and it's another voice for the animals. So, I would like to see something like that move forward in moving this transition. I think it's a great idea. I think that, you know, like Commissioner Mitchell mentioned, it's moving west. It's out there on Midway Road. It's where our animals, it's where Maria and them come from. And it holds us and our staff accountable for what we do and for our animals. And so, I think this is a great plan of moving forward, so. I want to thank you for putting all the effort into it that you have, and I know that we have a great vet. He's been in this community a long time. I just hope you're going to be around for a little bit longer.
Don't go anywhere.
He, he has assured us that he is not going anywhere for a little bit of time.
10 years. Can we get 10 years out of you?
Going once, going twice.
But I, I think that this plan does exactly that. It gives us that flexibility in the future to make changes, you know, or relocate. And I think that we will, we get our investment back out of that.
And I think it's important to also, I know that a lot of times when we as Commissioners recognize staff, I know I hear in the community, "Why do you recognize staff? They're doing their job. They are." But this particular item with the county over the last couple of years has had unforeseen circumstances. And Maria, you have always rose to the occasion, and you've always met the need with your staff. So, I think it's important that you get recognized for your leadership and what you've done through the last couple of years of keeping the animals safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend. And in final words, this conversation, it's a difficult situation nationwide. You know, the, the, the animals that are left to fend for themselves, it's a difficult situation. And we appreciate the public support in helping support Humane Societies or other agencies that provide animal care and adoption. It's, it's unfortunate that the rejection from the city came to recognize our previous relationships as always being well and, and in support of taking care of taxpayer dollars, but also the animals. So, I'm going to wish the city of Fort Pierce well. The unfortunate part is the business plan of the current agency is unsustainable, and it's unreliable in some cases in the way of employment and management. So, I think it forces the issue, and I think it's, it is really time that we move to a different model. This will provide that opportunity. And that said, I'm going to clam up and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Townsend, a second by Bart. Any other comments or questions on the item?
I just wanted to say, before we vote, and I'm in support, is that we've come a long way with stopping puppy mills, with the no-kill, with the dogs being left outside in the heat. And Ms. Parrish and the ladies, thank you so much for bringing it to our light. And we've come a long way, and I just wanted to say that, and I vote yes.
All right. All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. So, that was item number one, and so we'll move to... That's all we have. Okay.
That's it.
All right. Mr. Tipton, any announcements?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of County Commissioners will hold a tri-county meeting with Indian River County and Martin County on Tuesday, October 26, at 9:00 a.m. at Indian River State College, the Brown Center, which is here in Fort Pierce. There is also a special joint meeting with the city of Port St. Lucie on October 27, beginning at 8:00 a.m. at the Indian River State College's Pruitt Campus. And then our next regular board meeting will be November the 2nd at 6:00 p.m. here in these chambers.
Okay, and the comments from the Board. I think I heard that the Chili Cook-Off is coming up pretty soon?
It's Saturday.
It's Saturday, so, you know, Commissioner Townsend, I know that you and I have significant time there, and we're reaching now 39 years, so it's pretty, pretty amazing. And the Boys and Girls Clubs have adjusted, and now they're moving it over to Clover Park. So, we hope everybody will come out and, and support the Chili Cook-Off. That being said, if there's nothing else, it's a good order. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Moving on to...
You want me to start with erosion?
Sure.
I'd like to call the erosion meeting to order. Is there any general public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, come back to the approval of minutes for September 21st. Is there a motion?
Second.
So, Mitchell and Zdowski, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda. There's warrants.
Move it, babe.
Second.
Zdowski and Mitchell with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There's nothing on the regular agendas. Or motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Call together, mosquito control district, regular meeting on Tuesday, October 19th. Any general public comment? Seeing no general public comment, I'll move for an approval of the minutes of the September 21st, 2021. We have a motion by Zdowski, second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, warrants, list 52 to 54. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Townsend, second by Zdowski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are no regular scheduled items. Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We come together as the Sustainability District, going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board? Seeing no movement, going to close public comment. There are no minutes to approve. There are no items on consent. We do have a public hearing. The Energy Special Assessment District, are you going to take that, Barbara?
Yes. Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Barbara Geller, MSBU Coordinator. One of the funding methods available for energy conservation and renewable energy improvements is to levy non-advalorm special assessments on those properties which derive a direct benefit from the improvements. This type of assessment is based on benefit and collected along with property taxes using the Uniform Method pursuant to Section 197.3632 of the Florida statutes. In order to preserve this funding option, it is necessary for the Board to adopt a resolution expressing its intent to use the Uniform Method of collecting commencing in November 2022. The resolution must be considered at a duly-advertised public hearing held prior to January 1st, 2022. Staff recommends Board adoption of the Energy SAD Notice of Intent Resolution and authorization for the Chair to sign documents as approved by the county attorney.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the Board, come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There are no items on the regular agenda. Have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Thank you.